Call this Village of Green Hills Regular Council Meeting for April 28, 2020 to order. Clerk call the roll. And actually, we have an acting clerk tonight in addition to Vanessa. And whose name I've now already forgotten.
Tanya.
It's Tanya.
Okay.
This is Vanessa. I'm gonna do the roll call.
All right.
Holter?
Here.
Hermes?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Matt?
Here.
Walter?
Yeah.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
And Councilmember Asmaan Agloo has an excused absence tonight.
Correct. And our acting clerk is Tanya Kohler.
Yes, I'm here. Yep.
All right. Okay, we have a prayer. Maria?
Lord, we ask for the send your spirit of servanthood upon all of us gathering here this evening. Your work for the benefit of all in our community. We ask for to bless our elected and appointed officials so they may deliberate with wisdom and act with courage. Bless the member of our community who will come and send the emails to be before, before council so they can say their cause with honest and humility. Lord, we ask you to bless us all and that everything we do here tonight will move you to welcome us one day into your kingdom as good and faithful servants. We ask this in the name of our brother Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. Pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance.
Pledgeance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God. Indivisible. With liberty.
Liberty and justice.
Just for all.
We're gonna have to work on that to get that.
It's hard.
All right, we have council minutes for February 25th, March 10th, and April 14th. If there are no comment or questions or corrections, minutes will stand approved. None, minutes approved. Okay, at this time, it's time for citizens to comment on matters before council. Due to the orders issued by the state of Ohio regarding the pandemic situation, citizens were given the opportunity to email comments and questions. Comments@greenhillsohio.org by 12 noon on Tuesday, April 28th, and have them read at the council meeting. And the comments are limited to three minutes. And other acting clerk Vanessa will read the comments that were sent in. But after three minutes, she'll stop reading. Go ahead.
Okay. Village received comments and questions from four residents. The following was received from Jennifer Hardy, 11 Avenel, regarding a local historic district designation. Her questions are as follows. One, for what purpose is council seeking a historic designation area for Green Hills? Question two, who will vote for parts of the village to become a historic designation area? Property owners in the designated area or council and why? Question three, how many council members own property in the designated area? Question four, does the village own any property in the designated area? Question five, why did council choose to spend over $4,000 for a consultant before consulting with the property owners in the designated area? Why were the property owners not notified personally? I have spoken to some homeowners in the proposed district and many are unaware of the possible designation, let alone its financial significance to them. Question six, can a historically designated area be reversed? Has this consultant or council considered the long-term effects for the property owners to? A, pay for maintenance? B, how might it affect the property taxes in the designated area? C, how might it affect the ability to resell property in the designated area, especially considering the poor ratings of our school district? Question seven, who will sit on the board to approve slash decline owners who are applying to make changes to their property if this passes? Question eight, has council researched similar villages who have passed a historical designated area for feedback? Problems experienced, maintenance costs to owners? Whether building upkeep improved or declined or stayed the same? Question nine, has the consultant researched why certain materials or colors or building processes were used by the government? For example, was white paint used on every building because it was easier and not for some significant reason? Lastly, I would like to reiterate my adamant rejection of the proposed historic designation area. It has been a disappointment to me how this important decision has been handled, poorly publicized, and how every council member failed to reply to either email I sent asking about the designated area. Moving on, the following questions were received from Debbie Eichert. Oh, is council going to respond now or respond later?
Well, later.
Well, later. We may discuss this in a work session. The manager, I think, has already responded to her. But I'm not positive. Have you answered her?
I'm working on it.
Okay.
Does anyone remember getting an email from this person?
I got one and I turned it into a meeting on council day and I gave it to the mayor and also to, it was passed, I think, to Ms. Kovak at the time.
Right. And she has already responded to her in the past.
Great. Mine was a gentleman, not a lady. Mine was a gentleman, but it was similar kind of questions.
Okay.
And just for a little background, I mean, we've been working on this now since like 2018. And there are a couple of things that actually everybody was notified individually. Personal letters, direct mailing letters went to property owners, not to tenants, but to property owners. There were a number of issues and I am responding and writing to her on that.
Will we be able to?
Castle copy.
Will we be able to get a copy of the questions that you need?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, next one.
Okay. The following questions were received from Debbie Eichert at 62 Damon Road. Why was the pool filled in early April? What is the total cost to maintain the pool for a month? Could you be a little more financial, financially responsible? And does this come out of the recreational fund? Those are her questions.
All right, next one.
Should I continue, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. The following comments were received from Shelley Keating at 66 Ilona. We ask that you impose a moratorium on quote, "small cells," end quote, and other wireless infrastructure permits, process, and deployment until the COVID-19 emergency is over. The wireless providers are using the COVID-19 emergency as cover to expand and cement their rapid and virtually unsupervised deployment of harmful wireless infrastructure. Our local leaders should not have to dedicate time and resources to policing whether the wireless companies are following local and state law. They have far more important things to do. The FCC wireless permit rules allow emergency moratoria. Homeland Security Guidelines emphasize that maintenance of existing communications capability is the priority. The new construction is not essential. The COVID-19 emergency has led to a government shutdown of nonessential activity. Hospitals, emergency response, and local officials are overwhelmed and they must be allowed to focus on what is indeed essential. Now is not the time to be dedicating resources to expanding rather than just maintaining our networks. The FCC has directly held a local jurisdiction to impose a temporary halt to deployment and permits during emergencies. In the matter of accelerating wireless broadband deployment by removing barriers, FCC 18-111, 33 FCC RED 7705, 7784-7785157. From 2018. We recognize there may be limited situations in the case of a natural disaster or other comparable emergencies where an express or de facto moratoria that violates Section 253A may nonetheless be necessary to protect the public safety and welfare or to ensure the continued quality of telecommunications services. Homeland Security has declared that local government is on the forefront and can take control over determining whether to temporarily halt all nonessential activity. Homeland Security Guidance documents prioritizing maintenance of existing communication systems and does not support essential status for new construction. See Homeland Security, Cybersecurity, and Infrastructure Security Agency. Identifying critical infrastructure during COVID-19. There's a web address given, which will be noted in the minutes. E-critical infrastructure and key resources support annex. There's another website given, which will be noted in the minutes. Focuses on protection, response, recovery, and restoration. Home security like the FCC understands that it is essential in an emergency situation justifying focus on protecting, responding, recovering, and restoring of existing systems. But new communications facilities, construction is and should be deemed nonessential and subject to lockdown for so long as we are under emergency conditions.
Okay, the three minutes.
Cities can and should. Okay.
Okay.
That's the end of the comments from this resident.
Okay.
Would you like me to move on to the next?
Yeah.
This is our fourth and final entry for the night. Following comments were received from Anna Steele at 150 June Field. Guess what? This pandemic has a silver lining. Following the Homeland Security and the FCC orders, local authorities have emergency powers to place a moratorium on nonessential activity, including to pause all pending wireless zoning and right-of-way applications and to shut down new wireless construction. See the following in the attachment below. In the matter of accelerating wireline broadband deployment by removing barriers, FCC 18111, 33 FCC RCD 7705, 7784-7785157 from 2018. I believe this is just a repeat of the ordinance that was noted in the previous one. I'm going to continue reading her comments because the official numbers will be included in the minutes. Please use this opportunity to stop the installation of 5G. 5G technology has not been properly tested to determine its impact on human health or the environment. The FCC has apparently never studied the health impacts of wireless technology. Yet numerous peer-reviewed scientific studies conducted by other parties point to adverse biological effects from the electromagnetic radiation emitted by wireless devices and infrastructure, including immune dysfunction, altered brain development, sleep and memory disturbances, ADHD, sperm dysfunction, brain tumors, and more. The last thing we should be doing right now is expanding a technology that can weaken people's immune systems. Thank you for your time, consideration, and service. That is the end of the resident comments for tonight's meeting.
Okay, and at our work session in two weeks, council can discuss the 5G items if we decide to. You know, I don't know if if this particular Homeland Security ruling makes much of a change or not. I don't know if our law directors look at that or not. But we can schedule it for the work session. Okay, thanks for your comments. Moving on, reports of village officials, Municipal Manager Yvonne Kovak.
Thank you, Mayor. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, um, well, I believe, I checked yesterday, there are still no confirmed cases of the virus in Green Hills. So that's good news for everyone. Good on social distancing. And I think you probably all heard that the governor announced his plan yesterday for getting Ohio back to work, including the five protocols for businesses. I can tell you, our operation is doing those already. And the only new one would be face masks, which I understand today may have been changed to a suggested, not required. But, you know, we can follow that and as the time gets closer, we'll put the proper policies in place to make sure that our employees are protected and the citizens of Green Hills. I have heard from some of our businesses who are already working on plans to get started. I think it's on May 12th when they're permitted to open again, so that's really good to hear as well. One of the things that I do want to spend some time on tonight is the swimming pool because, you know, we're moving closer to the start date. Still unknown if we're going to be able to open on time. But we're hopeful that we'll have at least a partial season, if not the whole season. Wanted you to know, again, I probably mentioned it the last time, SwimSafe, who we contract with SwimSafe to operate the pool. They are like on top of this or all of their other pools as well. And they are working, you know, with all the CDC guidelines, the Health Department, to be sure that when they're given the green light, if we are to open the pool, they'll be on it and preparing a plan to operate accordingly. They'll be purchasing the PPE that we hear about so much for their employees. They're sure that will be a requirement. They're looking into new state-of-the-art disinfecting programs and equipments. And I see Mike there will probably be doing the same thing for our playground. We'll have to find a way to disinfect inside, like inside the slides, the part that's not exposed to the sunlight, so that would be addressed. They're actually licensing their lifeguards on online programs now to keep that underway. Let's see what else here. Those are probably the essential ones. I just want to give you the impression and you know that they are working on it, so if and when we get the go-ahead, we can go ahead and open the pool. The earlier question that came up about why we filled the pool. You know, we have to fill the pool every year, whether we use it or not. It's an ongoing maintenance issue. We can't let it sit. It would be a breeding ground for bacteria, mosquitoes, and other disease that could be harmful to the entire community. It's also important to protect the pool service and the equipment has to be run to keep it from corroding and turning into what would be a costlier startup for the pool in the following year if we didn't open this year, so it's money that had to be spent. And at this point in time, I think it's way premature to write off the entire season anyway. So that's the reason for the pool having been filled already. We appropriated 180,000 for the pool operations, so it is a big cost for us, but it's also very heavily used. You know, we get a lot of traffic at the pool. We have transferred general fund money to the pool, but not recreation levy money. I think that was another question. And to date, we've paid out about 41,000 for readying the pool. How we are billed for that with our SwimSafe contract is, you know, like starting probably in January, it's a small amount and then it increased, the dollar amount each month increases throughout the summer till they've closed the pool, you know, winterized it for the next season. And I believe it's in November and December, or else December and January, we make no payments at all, so it's not a set amount per month. It's kind of a sliding scale based on the use for the pool. Another thing I've heard from citizens that I do want to address, to be sure they know, if for some reason the pool does not open, we've received just a handful of memberships at this point in time, but if for some reason it doesn't open, or if we have a shortened month, we will definitely work with the residents on refunding the appropriate amount to them that they've paid out for that. So I don't want anybody to be concerned about that. Another thing, Tree City, everybody's, we get so many emails about so many things that have been changed, but Tree City USA, which is one that we work on every year, they have also eliminated their requirement for a proclamation or an Arbor Day observance. Certainly, if we can do something later in the year, we will do that. But I want to let you know we're not off track on our Tree City USA requirement. And another one I wanted to update you, and I'm glad Mike's here in case I say this wrong, but he had to make some changes on the lighting at Winton and Ingram. Apparently, there were some pretty big backups all the way via Sharon Road because people are stopping. If you notice, the contractor has already put up a no left turn onto Ingram. If you're heading southbound on Winton, people just aren't noticing it. They're not used to that, so they're stopping and it's tying up the whole traffic because it's, you know, all the way back. Nobody can get past them, so they're going to be putting a bag over the left turn signal, posting another sign up on the wire, so it's more visible and a little bit more recognizable. And the timing is also changing. North and South Winton Road will be green for 40 seconds. East and West Ingram Damon will be 12 seconds. It will be that way throughout the duration of the construction because of how they're doing the work, so let me know if you have any questions on that. Mike's going to monitor that and certainly if adjustments are needed, we will make them as needed. Tall grass complaints. I mentioned at the work session that we would be issuing violations. We have done that. And I know people, nobody ever likes getting that letter. Just realize it's not a citation. It's a notice of a violation. If the grass gets cut, just don't worry about it. Go on. But again, we do continue to get calls from residents who complain about the grass, so it's, you know, it's a two sides to this story and we just don't want to wait three or four weeks or maybe two months before we would even start citing people. You can imagine how tall the grass would be. So we are going to continue forward with that issue. And then the other note I want to make right now is Concerts on the Commons so far have been canceled through the month of June. Hopefully, we won't have to do any more than that. That's where we are right now.
Any comments or questions to the manager?
I have a neighbor that asked if we were still going to have the garage day on June the 6th. I still list it as such. Have we, any decisions been made on that?
We haven't made a decision. You know, I think we just wait really for every week to.
Okay, I told her that, I'm a native Ohio. The most recent thing would be on the website.
Yes.
Okay, all right. And then second, on the tree plantation, are you planning eventually to have some kind of ceremony or anything like that?
Hopefully, it'll probably be in the fall.
In the fall, okay. Would you please give me the most likely trees that we can plant in the fall and it still survives the winter and so I can put an order for one of them? Because I always donate for Arbor Day tree and it's a flowering one to put on the canopy of Winton Road, so I would like to get some guidance on that, would you please?
I will do that. And just so you know, actually, late fall into winter is the most desirable time because the roots have gone dormant, so it's in place. And then when the spring comes and the rains, it can spread its roots and grow.
Well, if you can share from that, I'm partial to the variegated red bud because it's the one that is mostly advised for this particular geography part of the United States. So if that's still standing, that's, it's beautiful blooming in the spring, so I would like to do that. So would you please let me know and I'll put the order in whenever is convenient.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yvonne, are you aware of any 5G construction going on within the village or adjacent to the village or in the general area at all?
I am not.
Okay. I, you know, I was just trying to respond to.
Definitely nothing in the village.
Nothing in the village, but I thought there was something adjacent to the village.
Respond to.
There may be, but that doesn't have anything to do with us.
Yeah, I was just trying to respond to the form, the form letters that we've been getting on this particular issue.
Yeah. Right, right. Same old.
Okay.
I would still mention that the majority of our residents are supportive of having 5G. And the federal government seems to be pushing it harder, especially now that we have this issue with the coronavirus. There are people out there saying that, you know, we would do better medical conferencing and that sort of thing with 5G, so we'll see how it evolves. Okay, Law Director Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, we are not a party to any pending legal actions, so I get to say nothing to report on that front. And as you've probably all noticed, there's really not much action going on at the state level either, so I don't have any state legislation to report on tonight, so no report, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
When can I get a haircut, Jeff? I mean, I really need a haircut.
You and me both.
Which, what are we talking about? Sorry, I couldn't help myself.
Okay, moving on, Clerk of Council, whichever one wants to report.
I'm gonna guess they have no report tonight.
No report.
No, Mayor, no report from the acting clerk of council.
All right. Chief Police Neil Fertleman.
Thanks, Mayor. It's been an unusual time for us as well, but we've been going into work every day. We now use our no-touch thermometer before anybody enters into police headquarters. We've been making most of our non-emergency calls by telephone. One particularly nasty call that we've been handling, or at least nasty for the victims, has been some computer fraud. And probably about a year or so ago, Facebook was hacked and millions upon millions of passwords were ferreted out of Facebook's database. So hackers now are sending out letters by the thousands. And several of our residents have already received those and they have reported them that they have, they've been hacked and their camera on their computer has been activated and their activities have been observed. And then there's an extortion in there to where they demand about $2,500. It's pretty much a form letter that is included in the email. But we've had a number of residents that have received that, so anyone that does receive that, it is a scam. It's not authentic. If you need any kind of advice or any help with it, or you want to report it to us, please do so. We are working on finding IP addresses where those have originated from. Most of them are from Europe. But we are sending the information to the Attorney General's Fraud Unit, so there can be a follow-up. We have suspended our training. Our court dates have been pushed back. The current pushback is to May 28th at 6:00 PM. We'll evaluate that as it gets closer and the magistrate will make a decision as to whether or not mayor's court will be held at the end of May. We're not allowing observation patrol. Our drug box is closed. We do ask people that want to use our drug box, just hang on to those bags for a little bit longer. And as soon as the pandemic is over, we'll have all of that reopened again. One of the upsides of this very odd situation is we've gone into the happy birthday business. We've had a number of calls from residents all through town to come and celebrate birthdays for young children. Our officers have gotten very resourceful and have obtained cards themselves. And we have a little treasure trove of Beanie Babies and other toys and those have been distributed and the kids seem to get a real charge out of the cruiser and the siren and the blue light and on occasion, the Green Hills Fire Department has bonded. And uh, on occasion, the Green Hills Fire Department has responded also with either a squad or a fire truck. So uh, we've uh, we've gone into the birthday greeting business. We've uh, also been the recipient of some great donations of personal protective equipment. Uh, when the pandemics first started, most police departments didn't have a sufficient supply for something of this nature. Uh, one of the first to reach out to help was Butler County Sheriff Rick Jones. Uh, he got us started with a fairly large amount of masks. Uh, we did not have many of the N ninety-five masks. And Matthew Twenty-Five Ministries came through and made a sizable donation, even our own residents and business people. We had uh, two uh, rather elderly residents uh, on both sides of town that have made donations of N ninety-five masks to us. And Greg Roy, who owns Bargains Buyouts, said he had a few left in his warehouse and he brought them up. So that shows you the kind of community spirit that we have. We did participate in uh, two sad events uh, over the past thirty days. One was the uh, murder of Officer Kaya Grant from adjoining Springdale Police Department. Uh, our honor guard participated in guarding the casket uh, following her death and until the funeral. And uh, our officers also participated in the procession and the events. The other sad event was the death of one of our resident, very brave sixteen-year-old resident by the name of Jonathan Borner, who had been battling cancer. And uh, unfortunately, he had progressively gotten worse even after finishing chemotherapy and other treatments. He was able to, while he was well enough, uh, courtesy of the Make-A-Wish Foundation, to travel to London. Uh, and uh, he went to a Doctor Who tour, uh, one of his favorites. And he got to see a lot of the sights there. Uh, after he passed, his uh, pastor contacted us and we did another parade. The fire department and the police department teamed up and we led many friends and relatives uh, by the house. And they dropped off toys and other uh, uh, things for the family and many well-wishers participated. So uh, we got a, a thank you from his church and they truly appreciated the uh, the efforts. We did uh, participate in an online rather than an onsite accreditation assessment recently. That was completed the week of April fifth. Uh, we passed in full compliance. Uh, our assessor told us that on behalf of Kalia, please accept my appreciation for the cooperation from your staff and your commitment to accreditation. That was all managed by Lieutenant Ann Ward, who did an outstanding job once again on that project. We want to make sure that residents uh, know that there is uh, some light at the end of the tunnel in terms of food that is available. Uh, We Thrive in Forest Park is holding an event from one P M to three P M coming up on May fifth, where free fresh produce will be available to anyone uh, that, that comes uh, to the event. It will be at the Forest Chapel at six eighty West Sharon Road, pretty nearby our community. And if you need any more information on that, feel free to call uh, the police department. We'll be glad to provide that. In terms of statistics during the most recent month, we investigated four accidents, seven crimes and forty-sixty-nine other incidents. I can tell you that our level of uh, incidents and calls have gone down. However, the intensity of those that we've responded to has gone up. Uh, typically, uh, we have received many more domestic violence calls. Oftentimes, we're able to work through those and talk with the, the people that are involved and maybe get one to leave temporarily. Go see uh, mom and dad or other, another family member. Uh, however, in, in the recent month, uh, we've had to make numerous arrests. And uh, actually those have involved some struggles with either the other party or with the officer. So that has, has been a byproduct of this crazy time. Uh, a total of seven hundred and thirty-six contacts that we had with residents. Two hundred and fifty-eight of those were dispatched by our communication center. Uh, and four hundred and seventy-eight of those were self-initiated by our officers. We provided assistance to the public in two hundred and ten instances. We assisted other agencies fifty-nine times. We made forty-two criminal arrests and forty-nine traffic arrests. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any comments or questions for the chief? All right. Uh, and um, my report is that I have nothing to report and I'll be glad when this uh, gets resolved hopefully uh, in our lifetime. Um, I uh, I, I'm assuming that our uh, work session will be uh, online like we've done this in the last work session. Uh, and we'll see what the governor's orders um, evolve, uh, how they evolve for the month of May. Uh, I guess there's a potential that we could have our next regular council meeting at the municipal building, but it probably looks a little doubtful right now. Uh, we'd have to rearrange things uh, uh, potentially. But we'll just have to wait and see. Okay, that's all I have. Uh, committee reports, recreation cable TV Natasha Metz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to reiterate the spring garden contest, our first annual garden contest. Um, you've got the grow a seed competition, which is for young gardeners under eighteen. Uh, grow a plant, uh, a seed in the ground or in a container and then document how that seed grows. And then you can send in your photo journals. We also have the planted garden competition, which is for adult gardeners over eighteen. And those, it's for, you know, planting a new garden, sprucing up an existing garden or creating a whole container garden. And again, making documentation through photos of how that's growing and sending in your photo log. Um, there's going to be winners from both categories that'll be announced um, after the June first deadline. So um, get going on your green thumbs there. And then uh, Yvonne touched on most of it. But um, as far as the calendar events, we'll be updating that on a regular basis on, online. But at current events, um, they're canceled to the end of April, so the end of this month. Still working on tentative um, opening of the swimming pool and then the Concerts on the Commons close through uh, June now. So uh, that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Comments or questions? Um, I make one comment uh, to remind people if they want to keep updated with what's going on in the village to check our website. Uh, but the other thing that would be good uh, to sign up for headline news, which you can go to our website and do that. And um, so when we come up with um, something new, something um, precaution to residents, what have you, it'll go out over the headline news. Uh, we also have a one-call system uh, which wouldn't be a bad idea for individuals to sign up on uh, uh, in case there's an emergency. But we also use the one-call to um, announce the concerts on the commons and those various things. Okay, moving on, uh, intergovernmental affairs, laws and rules, Maria Walther.
Uh, we haven't had a meeting. Um, we had no, any topic, any agenda for that, for a meeting. Uh, but also I wanted to let you know that on the um, headlines that you mentioned, uh, it was supposed already to have been double-checked and say that was up and running, but I still don't, I'm not in it. So I don't know what uh, the situation is, but I still don't get any of the headlines.
You need to get a new I T guy. All right.
Uh, I think it was the last time it was checked, um, because I was getting emails, et cetera. Now I'm getting the emails. I'm, I'm getting the uh, everything that I need to get, the, the password, the ID. I'm getting all of that, but still no, no headlines. And uh, I, I'm trusting on uh, Ms. Kovac to let me know if uh, there would be any items for an agenda to call the meeting. And I have to do it on this way, virtual, okay?
Maria, one of the things, uh, when we were trying to do the Zoom for the work session, um, you had mentioned about not getting the email. And I had you search. Um, you might want to just check. Sometimes you can rearrange your email so that it's not the current emails. Um, I'm not saying it's not an I T issue, but that one time it was a search issue and how you were looking for something. Um, but feel free to reach out to me and we could go through that and see if it's there.
Okay, uh, I, I, I assume that is through the uh, uh, rack space, correct?
Uh, it comes as an email, right? The newsletter comes as an email.
It, it, it would come to your personal email.
Yeah, it would come to you.
I have never seen it on neither one.
Yeah, well, if you want help checking through that, let me know.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on, uh, Service and Streets. Uh, I don't know if anybody has anything to report for Jennifer, who's not here tonight, but. Uh, since I know there hasn't been a meeting, so uh, I'll assume not. I don't know, Jack?
Uh, noth- nothing in that regard. Mike, 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 unless you have anything to report? No.
I think I have something that might be appropriate for Streets and Services, uh, because I failed to mention it during my report. Uh, I, I know everybody's probably been seeing folks walk around in the town. Um, and if you recall, I think at the work session, you mentioned that they would be out doing the sidewalk assessments. So um, they have completed that. I'm really thrilled that they've done that and have provided me with the total cost now for the whole village. Uh, they also broke it up in phases. So I was hoping that um, that that would be a Streets and Services item. And if they wanted to meet maybe jointly with finance, so we could figure out how we would want to go about undertaking the project. I, I think normally we wouldn't really have to give it a lot of thought, but given our financial situation and not knowing the impact of the virus, we better think this out before we um, start down that road. So at some point in the future, if we can do um, a meeting of mayor, whatever committee feels appropriate, um, decide how we go on this one.
Yeah, if, if anyone was noticing what the little blue, blue tags on the, on the sidewalk squares were. That's, that's what it was, so.
Okay, Community Development Jeff Holder.
Anybody hear him?
No, I can't.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Try again.
Uh, a couple of things I wanted to just touch base with you, Yvonne, or possibly Mike was uh, on the, uh, it might be helpful for residents to know as we look at that proposed park, you know, for um, the village, what the plan is on maintenance through till that happens. I think we're just planning on to keep mowing it and.
Correct, yes.
Just, I just thought it'd be helpful for people to know that. Uh, and then a couple of other things, uh, was the entryway sign base. Is that going to be on hold for a while, the one that's uh, up by Sharon Road?
Um, you know what? I, I need to get a date on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I talked to the vendor and we picked out the rocks and I'll have to get back with him on that. I'm sorry, can't recall right off.
No problem. Um, and then the only other thing, sorry, I had some other, more of a question than a report, is just the shopping center sign and when that was wrapped up.
Right, it was scheduled for last week. They're having delays, delays.
So we're close, right?
They were hoping within like the next week, but it should be sometime fairly soon. I'll let you know as soon as we hear anything.
With the business and the businesses in the state they are right now, I'm not sure, you know, they can capitalize on it right off the bat, but um, it wouldn't hurt once that's up to start, you know, um, communicating what's there at the shopping center so people can. But that concludes my report.
All right, Safety Melanie Hermes.
Yes, I apologize. Um, my phone connected with some other device, so I had to get off and jump back on. It wouldn't let me reconnect. Um, Safety currently does not have a meeting scheduled. I was going to schedule one either for um, May twenty-sixth or June twenty-third um, at five-thirty, but I will check with Chief Fertleman first to see what kind of issues he has. I'm in favor of pushing it to the June twenty-third, um, just to get things more settled before we meet. Um, unless something is up and needing to happen before then. Um, any questions for Safety? And always thank you to the men and women of our uh, police department and fire department. Uh, I appreciate everything they do, especially in this time. And I'm uh, enjoying the birthday parades and I'm glad it's one of those things we can reach out and do.
Very nice. Okay, Finance and Audit Jack Lee.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we've not had a scheduled meeting and just kind of waiting for an, an open day to come available to us uh, at, at this point. Um, I, I'm, I'm sure our, our finance director can, can jump in here at, at, at any point. But it appears that um, for the month of March, um, our, our, the reports that came out to us is pretty much as, as we a- anticipated and as was outlined by the manager in the um, work session earlier this month. Uh, the, the revenues, the, the income tax revenues for the month of March, uh, were, were down by almost a third. It, it, the year-to-date though is, is at, at least at that point um, on, on, on target as far as being equal to, to uh, two thousand nineteen. I think there's going to be a lot, lot clearer picture of what exactly we're dealing with uh, coming in the months of uh, April and June um, a- at, at that point. Um, the fund balance uh, overall for the general fund um, is pretty much as expected. I think, I, I think um, we were fortunate to, to be in a, a, a good position at the beginning of the year and were able to fund uh, a lot of the anticipated uh, necessary transfers at the, at the beginning of the year. And I want to thank our, our finance director and manager for uh, suggesting that would be a way to go. And I, I, and I think, I think that's, that's going to pay, pay dividends for us in the future. Uh, expenses have been held down uh, considerably. Um, and that's probably just the way we're going to have to work here for a while. So unless you have any specific questions, that's the end of my report. Uh, Deb? Yes, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, just a quick question. Are you guys running like some scenarios? I, I know you, I think Yvonne, you touched on some numbers before. Uh, but the in, the financial impact of this, you know, could be very great. And it seems like, do you have a list together of things that we have to actually um, do triage against if um, things go really, really south?
I, I, I'll, I'll, I'll defer to the manager and the, and the finance director because um, they know intimately about that.
Yes, Jeff, we, we have. Um, I, I did numerous reports last month to capture the first quarter. And um, so we knew exactly um, where we were, what we were anticipating. And I'm gathering information now um, from the different state and um, uh, local agencies uh, to, to determine what our next steps will be. I would think with the, another month under our belt, we'll, we'll have a pretty good idea uh, to make some solid uh, recommendations for the second half of the year. Um, a, a few things, just, just to, to let, let you know, um, we did uh, receive um, the uh, the real estate tax, the, the first half real estate tax settlement, which came in at the very beginning of April um, of over four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. So that was quite welcome. Um, and another thing we did, uh, you know, we, we had, uh, let me see here. Okay, so as of today, on our municipal income tax, uh, we have received thirty-eight percent of our budget. Um, it, it was down a, a little bit. Um, you know, we have, I did book the two April entries. So that takes us through the end of April. That, that is an actual number. So it's thirty-eight point two-five percent that we have received. Um. Next month probably won't be, you know, be as, as generous. But uh, you know, we'll, we'll have a little, little lag there for a month, uh, maybe two on.
Do you know how that compares to last year?
Um, yes, last year, um, we were um, uh, overall, well, at the end of March, I know the exact number. You know, we had um, just about two percent difference. You know, we were running pretty darn close.
Yeah.
But uh, you know, I mean, there's going to be a, a change um, for, for May.
And, and Jeff, the other thing to keep in mind is that the biggest fly in this. And and Jeff, the other thing to keep in mind is that the biggest flying disappointment is is the the delayed reporting and filing through through Rita through through the middle of July, so it's
I'm sure it's keeping
Yeah, it's 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 going to be a lot of if, if come maybes here here for the for the next couple of months, you know, just to to see really where we're going to be in the second, second half, but but to be to be sure the the manager and the finance director are on top of it.
Yeah, I'm I'm sure. And I think I guess the only thing I was just bringing up is, and I know you've got plenty on your plate, but thinking, you know, a year out, two years out, I I know it's tough to know exactly what's going to happen, but it wouldn't hurt if we can to run some scenarios that run from pretty drastic to moderate.
You know, Deb, you might, you might want to, you were just telling me before the meeting about the, I think it was the advice from the county. We're we already have to start the tax budget next month, which is kind of hard to believe, and didn't you say they're recommending we reduce revenues by at least twenty percent?
They they are. I mean, that seems to be the information that that's coming to us. So I want to see as much of reality that we can. Plus, but those are the projections that we may have to reduce our our revenues as much as twenty percent, which means we would have to cut our expenditures twenty percent to stay within audit compliance.
I just think, yeah, I think that's great, and I think even in a work session, if we started to have just a very little amount of time saying, here's a priority list, if we really got jammed in a corner, and I would rather be thinking about that now, and if it doesn't happen, great, you know, we'll go to Malloy's and have a party.
And Jeff, yes, we we've already looked, we've looked at our our capital expenditures, we've looked at our normal operating expenditures, and we have delayed or removed some of the items that we thought we would be able to do this year. So we we have already started that last month to to get a a new picture, if you will, going forward for the end of this year and into two thousand and twenty-one.
Yeah, I wasn't I wasn't doubting you guys at all. I just, I think it's a good exercise for all of us to be thinking, hey, if we had to choose between A, B, and C, you know, what are the most vital?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, new business. We have a couple of resolutions. First one's resolution number two thousand and twenty dash oh seven dash F, authorizing the adoption of an alternative method of apportioning the local government fund. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution two thousand and twenty dash oh seven dash F, a resolution authorizing the adoption of an alternative method of appropriating the local government fund. Whereas the Ohio Revised Code Section fifty-seven forty-seven dot fifty-three provides that in lieu of apportioning the undivided local government fund by the method prescribed by the Revised Code Section fifty-seven forty-seven dot fifty-one and fifty-seven forty-seven dot fifty-two, that an alternative method of appropriating said funds may be approved by the Budget Commission upon approval of such alternative method by the Board of County Commissioners. The legislative authority of the city located wholly or partially in the county with the greatest population and the majority of the boards of trustees, township trustees, and legislative authorities of municipal corporations located wholly or partly within the county, excluding the legislative authority of the city with the greatest population. And whereas upon whereas up until nineteen eighty-nine, the Hamilton County Budget Commission had operated under the statutory formula provided by the Revised Code Section fifty-seven forty-seven dot fifty-one and fifty-seven forty-seven dot fifty-two. And whereas the statutory method of appropriating the fund had resulted in repeated and continued litigation between and among parties entitled to participate in the distribution of the fund. And whereas the statutory method of appropriating the fund had resulted in continued uncertainties about the financial distribution of the fund. And whereas the alternative method of appropriating the fund first adopted in nineteen eighty-eight and renewed in nineteen ninety-five, two thousand and four, and again in two thousand and twelve, has brought stability to the process by eliminating the uncertainties of litigation and providing for a more efficient and effective method of financial planning. And whereas the alternative method of appropriating the local government fund as described and outlined in the attached Exhibit A represents a fair and equitable method of appropriating the local government fund, which is in the best interest of the Village of Green Hills. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Village of Green Hills, that the attached agreement be adopted and that a certified copy of this resolution be forthwith sent to the Office of the Hamilton County Budget Commission. Adopted on this regularly adjourned meeting of the Village of Green Hills in session April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Do you have a second?
Second. Sorry, I wasn't loud enough.
Yeah, just, just, just to kind of boil this down to the Reader's Digest version of this is is that this is an alter, an alternative method of divvying up the state, the state funds that are appropriated to Hamilton County through the local government fund. And it's something that's been done for the last forty years in 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 this alternative method.
All right, clerk call the roll. It's been moved and seconded to approve this. Clerk call the roll.
Halter.
Hi.
Hermes.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
Walther.
Hi.
Okay, but Resolution twenty twenty dash oh seven dash F passes. Next resolution, number two thousand and twenty dash oh eight dash C D, extending a moratorium for additional period of a hundred and eighty days on the granting of any permit allowing vape lounges and related uses, tattoo and body piercing establishments, and retail dispensaries, cultivators, or processors of medical marijuana with marijuana within the Village of Green Hills. Mr. Halter.
Yes, I have resolution number two thousand and twenty dash oh eight C D, extending a moratorium for an additional period of a hundred and eighty days on the granting of any permit allowed for vape lounges and related uses, tattoo and body piercing establishments, and retail dispensaries, cultivators, or processors of medical marijuana within the Village of Green Hills, Ohio. Whereas the Village of Green Hills, Ohio desires to coordinate regulations regarding the location and operation of businesses within the village, including vape lounges and related uses, tattoo and body piercing establishments, and retail dispensaries, cultivators, or processors of medical marijuana. And whereas council is determined to review the ordinances governing these particular uses in order to provide clarity and fulfill the purpose of the zoning code. And whereas council recognizes that amending the ordinances governing these particular uses must be done under the processes required by the zoning code, requiring, among other things, a recommendation from the Planning Commission, a public hearing before council, which could require several months to complete. And whereas it is recommended that the village manager review and make recommendations on the issue to conform to the village's goals of providing adequate regulations to ensure the public peace, health, safety, and welfare of its citizens. And whereas council has previously instituted a moratorium on the granting of such permits and has now determined it necessary to extend such moratorium. And whereas Planning Commission has initiated a review of certain regulations related to their uses. And whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic and its related health orders and mandated social distancing has necessitated the canceling or postponement of a number of public meetings, including Planning Commission, thereby making it unreasonable to review the proposed regulations during the term of the existing moratorium. And whereas a continued moratorium on the granting of permits within the Village of Green Hills will allow the village time to accomplish these goals. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of Village of Green Hills, Ohio, members elected there on two of concurring. Section one, that the Green Hills Village Council seeks an additional moratorium on permits for the establishment of vape lounges and related uses, tattoo and body piercing establishments, and retail dispensaries, cultivators, and processors of medical marijuana to preserve the public peace, health, safety, and welfare of our citizens of Green Hills, Ohio. Section two, that the Green Hills Village Council seeks to limit the duration of the moratorium and to request immediate and continued investigation and review of proposed comprehensive regulations on the establishment of vape lounges and related uses, tattoo and body piercing establishments, and retail dispensaries, cultivators, and processors of medical marijuana within the period of the moratorium. Section three, that the Green Hills Village Council hereby imposes an additional moratorium on permits for the establishment of vape lounges and related uses, tattoo and body piercing establishments, and retail dispensaries, cultivators, and processors of medical marijuana for the period of a hundred and eighty days from the effective date of this resolution or until such earlier time that said moratorium shall be terminated and directs that no permits shall be issued for these uses during the period of the moratorium. Section four, that Green Hills Village Council further finds that a moratorium for a period of a hundred and eighty days is reasonable and will allow a study for comprehensive regulations. Section five, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I recommend resolution number two thousand and twenty dash oh eight C D.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Clerk call the roll.
Walther.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
Hermes.
Hi.
Halter.
Hi.
Okay, resolution number two thousand and twenty dash oh eight dash C D passes. All right, that's it for new business and and I'll drop in the Dropbox signed copies of these resolutions so they can be recorded and distributed. All right, do we have anything for the municipal calendar?
Haircut. May, May fifteenth.
Well, we hope. So we have the next regular thing for council is a work session on the May the twelfth. And then that'll be online and then we'll see what will happen by May twenty-sixth. Anything, anybody have anything else? If not, everybody stay safe and I'm glad I worked out the bugs so I could get on just in time. I'm not sure what happened here on my end. So with that, unless anybody's got anything else to add, meeting adjourned.